Commissioner Dorsey, if he would lead us in this prayer.
Let's pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in a free country. We thank you for the many, many women overseas, both past, present, and those in the future, as well as those on our home soil that put their lives on the line to protect us so that we can have the freedoms that we have as American citizens. We ask that you be with those in emergency services that do the same thing in all branches. We ask that you be with those in the community who may be dealing with personal hardships, tragedies, whatever, whether it be publicly known or not. We ask that you keep those folks in our prayers and help them through the situations that they're dealing with. We ask that you give everybody here traveling mercies once the people's business is done, get everybody safe back home to their families. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you all for that. We'll call to order our Hart County Board of Commissioners meeting August 26. And first on the agenda, we'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or on our Hart County Board of Commissioners YouTube channel, or either on HTC Channel 3. We welcome each of you here tonight. Is there any additions to the agenda we need to?
No.
Or anything to take off? Everything's?
Uh, no, we'll leave the executive session on for real estate.
All right.
We made a motion, we approve the agenda as printed.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. So we'll move on down to approve the minutes of previous meeting, uh, August 12th, 2025. Do we have any additions or corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve? Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. Uh, we'll move on down to remarks by invited guests, committees. We have nine. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads. We have anything?
Hello, I just had a couple of things. Um, I got a call earlier this week, or end of last week, from, um, our jail, um, loan underwriter. And he had mentioned this during our, our round, we're trying to find our funding for the jail. And he is suggesting that we develop a financing authority, whether or not we do anything with that anytime soon. Better to have it and park it while we can still get one and not have one when we need one. But if we had a financing authority, when we went through the last round with the jail project, uh, the county had a two rating on its credit, which is fantastic. But because we had to do the leaseback through the ACCG, we lost a point in that system. So our interest would have been cheaper had we had a financing authority. He says it will only require a resolution by you all that we pass to Alan Powell. And then Alan Powell would have to agree to take that, you know, before the legislature to have it approved. Um, it's not something that I was asking for y'all to do tonight. I just kind of wanted to get that on your radar. Uh, he says it really needs to be in by December if we want it to, uh, to be taken care of in the spring.
Would that be like a board?
It is a board.
That we would appoint here?
When we were ready to do our next project. This is just getting the authority authorized.
But you said we had to be in there by December.
So get to the legislature.
So the legislature.
If you're not gonna do a capital project like a jail and have to borrow that kind of money, it's probably a moot point. But if you, you're basically preparing yourself for the next big project that you may have to.
Right. Well, I gather that.
We all know at some point, we're gonna have to do a courthouse. I mean, it's gonna have to happen, I think. Um, I guess that's my personal opinion.
But what I was suggesting, it'd be in our best interest to go ahead and then just put this board together, right?
Well, we don't even have to put the board together right now. We just have to have it authorized.
Okay.
If we do this, will we, will we get the point back, or is that?
No, no. No, that ship's sailed.
That's what you said, December. Are they gonna go back?
This will be for our next project, you know, and I'm, and I was just thinking, you know, water treatment facility at some point. If that's something that we could work out with the Water Authority courthouse. There are just gonna be some projects that we're gonna have in the future. And this window may close for having a financing authority, according to him. So I just wanted you all to think about that. And then the other thing was, um, I received a call this week. Um, there is another, um, battery storage facility, looking at Hart County, looking at a specific tract of land. The owner actually called me. And so, um, I just wanted to put back in front of you the fact that we were trying to do a very small gate to that by having them apply for a business license. Where your only authority under that would be able to turn someone down if it affected the public health, safety, or welfare. But the storage, battery storage facility is in a likewise, just as bad a location as the last one was in terms of having to evacuate a school. So I just wanted y'all to get that back on your radar, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, just what's the idea of the board, just off the top of your minds right now? I mean, I think the finance committee would probably be a good asset to, we'd already be prepared in case we had another project.
It would be in place. I mean, maybe we'll get it in place.
I think we need to talk to our representative and let him know ahead of time before we take action, just to make sure.
We're not gonna take an action.
I know, but I mean, I agree.
I'm just asking the board's consensus, do we want to pursue this or not?
I think it's worth looking at it, they put on the next meeting, next agenda.
I agree with you.
Okay. Then we can vote on it in due time.
Because you never know what a future board might decide to do.
Right.
Taxpayers, it'd be to their advantage.
Okay. Appreciate that, Kim. All right. We'll move on to county administrators' report.
I don't have one tonight.
All right. Uh, we'll move on to chairman's report. Uh, uh, I think the Ag Expo was very successful this year. I think, uh, Mr. Fleming, that Brian Fleming, that heads this up every year, and all the associates that work with him. I know the chamber was there, Industrial Building Authority, and a lot of vendors and a lot of educational opportunities and tractors. And I think, uh, I just like to tell Brian and the agriculture community, we appreciate what all was done, uh, at the Ag Center last week. So just want to give them a shout out and tell them appreciate what they do. And I'll move on to District One. Commissioner Bennett?
Uh, I'd like to echo Chairman Sayre on that also. They had a big hoopla out there. It was a huge time, especially those kids. You just had to see them with that, with them little tractors and so forth. Like, thank all of those involved that was putting that show together out there. There's a lot of hard work in it. And a lot of people just, it's a passion for them. Just thank them all. And I have a couple of other things. So, uh, had a couple of phone calls about the, some bush hogging down on Nance Hart School Road, uh, kind of sloppy job. That wasn't really a bush hogging job. That was, our county guys went down there and just was bush hogging around the intersection and so forth. Public safety, the grass down there with the reins, it got six foot tall around some of those areas. But they have crossed over 29 going into District One now to actually bush hog the communities down there and all that. And, um, the other thing is, uh, there's been a wreck the last three weeks, every week, down at Liberty Hill Church and Liberty Hill Road. Actually, right behind one of them, there today. Have we heard anything out of our four-way stop and also the three-way stop? Okay, it's gonna be included in that? Okay, okay. And that, and just thank all the departments for doing a great job. Hart County, they keep the wheels rolling around here. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I do, too. I appreciate our public safety, the job they do. Uh, I appreciate the road department, all of our county employees. I appreciate, too, like what Commissioner Sayre was saying about the Ag Expo, Brian Fleming to them. I did sign the chairman up for the pedal car race, but I don't think you ever showed that, did you?
No show.
But anyway, that's all I got.
We're moving on to District Four. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, just same sentiments there, echoing that. And to piggyback on what Commissioner Teasley said, maybe next year at the Ag Expo, they can have a pedal tractor race for all of us, and then we can settle this once and for all.
I tried to sign y'all all up, but they wouldn't do it. They said we all, they all work for us, they wouldn't put nobody's name on there.
We might sell tickets on that, forget one problem.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, District Five, Commissioner Dorsey?
I'd like to echo the same sentiments. It was a big turnout and a good job for all, all the guys. I've seen a famous entertainer on TikTok there.
Yeah, I met him. Who, yeah, who's true.
Um, that being said, I do want to get to a serious matter. And I ask that you keep the family of Gary Cobb, our former county administrator, uh, in your thoughts and prayers. He passed away just recently. So I found out about that about an hour before the meeting, so. Um, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks, you all. Uh, we'll move on down to old business. Uh, permission to solicit bids for rec basketball uniforms?
At the last meeting, y'all requested to go back for the executive board for their approval. Uh, and it has, and the copy you got is local sent me that they approved.
All right. Shouldn't we vote on that, that policy change as a board to?
Have him review?
What's the policy change?
They changed the, they voted on the policy.
Uh-uh.
To add, add likewise to the bid?
That's a bid spec.
Or equivalent.
That's just part of a bid spec. That's just part of a bid spec.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure.
But there, there does need to be some updates on here. This COVID stuff needs to be taken out. That's about six years ago.
I saw that. Okay.
I'll make a motion we approve.
I'll give it a sec.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on down to, uh, the equine fireworks ordinance. Take this as the third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, then we'll have, uh, 12C, the bid opening for the road study.
But it was on time?
We've got a bid from Keck and Wood, collaboration by design. Um, compensation for work shall be $388,469.50. It breaks it down, project initiation and management, $23,743.80. Pavement evaluation, $141,544.80. Data collection, $61,645.50. Public outreach, $53,899.90. Alternative selection, $72,954. Final report and implementation plan, $34,681.50. Um, and it makes multiple assumptions. Up to 15 intersections will be counted. The top 10 intersections identified by Hart County will be evaluated for traffic operations and safety improvements. Up to three alternatives will be evaluated for each of the 10 study intersections. Up to five concept layouts will be developed. Two future year scenarios will be evaluated in the traffic simulations. Opening year and design year. Pavement coring can be provided if deemed necessary after pavement evaluation is complete. Pavement coring is not included in the above cost estimate. The thing that I don't think is on here was the update. Didn't we have that in here, how to keep, about keeping it updated? So that cost apparently is not part of this bid, so.
And this right here is atlas and like right here for the pavement condition. Traffic engineer and intersections, $10,000. Public workshop, $6,690. Long range planning and modeling, $25,000. Uh, comprehensive transportation and safety plan, uh, $38,700. Cover survey, $22,600. And, um, let's see, crossings, crossings, uh, $12,900. Total of the comprehensive plan is, uh, $247,000. And some eight hundred, $247,800. That's a lot of Z-rays on that baby.
I have one from Lenco LLC. That's L-N-C-O out of Madison, Georgia. They have a pavement condition assessment at $85,000, even lump sum. Traffic engineering at intersection is $2791, $2,791 even per intersection. Public workshops, $22,200 lump sum. Long range planning and modeling is $25,000 lump sum. Comprehensive transportation and safety plan, $44,400 lump sum. And then intersection traffic count, uh, traffic counts as $1,200 per intersection. Do not have a total. They do have hourly rates that possibly could be, I guess, put in here for the ongoing planning. Senior professional engineer is $194.25 hourly. Technical professional, technical inspector general, $157.50 an hour. Inspector Elmeg inspection, $141.75 an hour. Junior inspector administrator, $110.25 an hour. Uh, it says all, all rates to escalate annual 2%. That's all I got on this one.
Okay. We have, uh, Kimbley Horn, uh, project management, $31,045. Countywide data collection and mapping, $23,405. Uh, pavement condition assessment, $15,315. Traffic and safety engineering, $101,175. Public and stakeholder engagement, $26,990. Long range planning and modeling, $37,745. Uh, comprehensive road engineering plan, $27,685. Uh, and traffic count data is $24,000. Pavement condition data collection, $64,000. Uh, meetings, $2,500. Total comes out to $352,860. And that's for Kimbley Horn.
Is that it? That's all of them? Did any of the bids that they inquire through you, um, as far as if there was existing data already available? Okay.
So hearing these numbers, um, I think it's very clear that we need to move forward hiring our own public works director to do this work.
How's that? How's that?
The cost associated with them.
Well, I don't think that we necessarily need to do everything that this is detailed out either. I mean, we got a full gamut of things that we particularly don't necessarily need to update our, um, comprehensive road plan. Um, we just have a road plan that hasn't been updated whatsoever since 2014. Um, on the public works director, I'd like to point out that we haven't had one since 2016. And that savings alone is equated to several hundred thousand dollars that this county saved by not having a public works director. Um, I don't think we need to spend $400,000 on this thing. But, um, you know, I know that we can get exactly what we need up to par, somewhere around that 85 to 100 mark. To me, that's dropping the bucket to actually be able to give these taxpayers some answers.
The problem with it is none of the bids that I heard read out said anything about keeping the stuff updated. If you start to do it, you've got to keep it updated because it's gonna constantly change. It's gonna constantly have to be looked at. And we've talked about an assistant county administrator. We've talked about a public works director. And I think everybody agreed we needed a public works director. That's something this person can work on. Terrell has said he, that he thinks a public works director is needed. Uh, we got engineering, other engineering projects that could be worked on, that kind of thing, uh, that could save us engineering money. Um, we're gonna continue to have growth, and we're gonna have to continue to look at. And I think that's something that this person could be looking at, uh, as well as to potentially backfill for Terrell in Terrell's absence. Um, that's my thoughts.
I definitely don't disagree with you on the public works director. I mean, that's something that's overdue and needed. But, you know, the basis behind this board going after this road study is, this is sorely overdue. Um, main point, in case again, we're, we're looking since 2014, since we have anything, um, to go off of. And it's time and time again, I'm getting phone calls, emails, you name it, from constituents asking, what's the plan? How are you choosing these roads? What's the data you guys are using? And I mean, the point, point blank is, we don't have one. I mean, we basically go out every two years and, you know, whichever road we pick out of a hat, that's the one that's, this, that we're going with. And, and we have no backing on those decisions, other than that's just what we feel in our heart. And to me, that's not good enough for the taxpayers. It's something that's well overdue. Um, I don't know. Terrell, do you think that this is something on your end that you can go back to them and say, okay, we got the full detail of, you know, line item things that you guys can offer, but?
I can go back, sure. I can go back and ask any questions you want me to ask. Uh, you, y'all outline what you want me to ask, and I'd be glad to ask you.
Because it seemed to me that it was fairly reasonable just for the updated, uh, map and comprehensive road plan, if you would. If they were going to do a road assessment and valuation, that wasn't that expensive compared to what I heard from all the other bids. It was the intangibles, the other things out there, especially when you got into the safety and the intersections, that would get pretty costly.
Right. And, and, and the ones that called me, which I think all of them called me, and I told them, I told them to work the intersections out on a per intersection basis because we didn't, we ain't gonna get them to a hundred here in intersections. We know that.
Right.
Uh, so they all should have had it broke down like that, kind of work per intersection. Uh, and again, they broke down in layers of different layers, as we felt about. So I can call and ask any questions of any of them.
So, so basically, it would be somebody that would come in from the outside and look and see like what roads we have, if we need to be resurfaced.
They would come in and do an assessment, just like, just like it says, and they would make a list, I would assume, of, in their opinion, this, 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 this. The final decision is always up to this board, whatever it is.
So I just want to say a few things, because I don't agree with what Commissioner Brown said and what he said I don't agree with. I don't, I say it's not true. I'm not saying he's lying, but I'm saying it's not true. We have a process upon which we select county roads. Each commissioner is responsible for the roads in their district. And when you go back to when the board of commissioners, current form of government was set up, prior to that, you had an elected at-large road commissioner who was responsible for the roads. So the way that this process has worked for probably the last 10 years is that each commissioner submits a list of roads that they deem is to be in the worst condition in their district. And this board, along with county administrator and road department supervisor, tell me, tell if I'm wrong. All right. We get out and we ride every one of those roads, and we see the condition at the same time of what those roads are in. And then we come back and we make a decision and we vote publicly on those lists of roads. That's how the roads have been selected in the past. Um, I will never give up my elected responsibilities to a third party because we are ultimately responsible for roads. It's clear. Um, and that's how it came about, and that's the process that's been used. So there has been a process. It's not just black magic or pulling names out of the air as far as what roads. And gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, we got out and rode every, the roads that we had on our list, did we not?
We rode, we rode the ones that we had on the list.
Right, and that's our jobs.
That each individual commissioner picked.
From your district. So there was a process.
Individually, with no expertise, no data, no grading with it. If, maybe I didn't get it. Did you guys get the list of roads that is graded and grades each road, their condition and their hierarchy of need? Does anybody else have that?
We selected those roads.
So basically, what we're saying is, the five of us come up with a list that we have determined through feedback, through people, I guess, if you get a number of phone calls or emails from a certain road, we gotta put it on the list. But did we not decide maybe we should seal that road? Maybe we should tar and gravel roads? Should we chip seal? I mean, basically, we're just going and saying, hey, here's my road, and we're picking it. I mean, this.
That's not true. That's not what we're doing.
But I feel like, I think we can do a little more research here and get a far lesser price and get what we're looking for.
And that's what, that's what comes into play. That person could do it in-house.
Well, we just need to do a little more research. Well, we just need to do a little more research ourselves or do our homework or whatever you want to call it. Uh, check with some other counties, see who they working with, if, you know, if they get their, but what their budget for it is, if they're a five-hundred-and-fifty-mile road base like we are, this type of deal. I just think, I, I don't feel good with them big numbers. I know we need, we got to do something. We need to do something.
I can tell you Madison County spent eighty-five thousand dollars, and they got a full comprehensive graded roadmap with a list, detailed plan, and they pay someone around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year to fulfill that plan.
Well, that's more my cup of tea. That's more my cup of tea.
We may, this may go that route, because we'll have a public works director that can do it.
Let's, let's talk Madison County. That's what I say. We need to do our homework, do a little more research.
My thought, my, where I'm trying to go with this, is when you start looking at roads, we, we're capable of going out here and looking. Keep in mind, our road department supervisor rode with us. Shannon rode with us, remember?
Okay.
So we get out here, and we're looking at alligator cracking. So if those of you don't know what alligator cracking is, kind of like a shattered windshield, and you can see where the base starts to fail, it'll start to sink. It holds water, water gets in the crack, and the pavement starts coming up. You've got longitudinal, latitudinal cracking. You can see that. That needs to be sealed. But the majority of the problems that we have to deal with in the roads that have been resurfaced were primarily all alligator cracking failures from trucks over time and traffic. That's what happens. And some of these roads lose their crown, and water stands on, you can see them. When they're resurfaced, it's clear as day. That's why we get out and we ride them, so we all see them in the same condition at the same time, and there's no, no issues.
And we can use phrases like alligator cracking or what's that?
But you can even ride with us this time.
And why should I? What, what exactly am I going to break the table as an expert on asphalt pavement? And I can look at a road and tell you that it's in bad shape, but I can't go back and say, well, it needs to be sealed, or it needs to be milled up and repaved, and the base is failing. That's where you have to bring, I mean, we're not the only ones, we're not reinventing the wheel here. This is what other people are doing, and they are finding success, uh, by doing so, because this pulls us out of the nineteenth century, and hello, it's the twenty-first century. There's data at hand, there's people that do this for a living, use this so we can make educated decisions for our taxpayers. Because right now, I'm sorry, but we're going off personal opinion. That, that is point blank, is personal opinion. There's no expertise certification.
I sound like I'm qualified to make that decision.
But you're not. Tell us your certification then, Commissioner.
I can. I can tell you about paving.
How, how long did you work for the DOT?
I didn't work for the DOT.
Okay, well, these guys did.
Railroad crossings and paving.
We're not paving railroads, we're paving roads.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing.
Okay. Let's get real.
I mean, Jeff, it's just ridiculous.
I think, I think the, the, my goal, my personal opinion, is that I would like to see us do something to these roads before they get to the alligator cracking stage, so it don't cost us as much money when we go to pave. Uh, we're losing a lot of miles because we waited to that point. If we had our roads graded and kind of worked off of a system, uh, I, I, I really think that, that, uh, our tax dollars would go further. I mean, um, this, we knew this, uh, bid was going to be out of, out of the water for Hart County. Uh, but I would like to see us put a bid back out there just for the, uh, just for the road assessments, just to grade the roads. And then we can come in as a board and take that data and make better decisions.
Well, we know what our intersections do. We don't need any of that. It's like you said, we just need the roads.
I, I get out and I ride every road in my district every three to four months. I can tell you, the problem areas, the visibility issues, the signage issues, I can tell you where all that is. And that's what, I mean...
Well, I ride roads too.
I mean, I ride every one of them.
Well, we all ride our roads.
Ride mine, too.
We probably know the roads better than anybody can, no doubt. I can tell you where the problems are in mine.
For them to look at again, or...
Terrell, could you weigh in and, and, I mean, or do we need to put this out for a bid, or can we ask these, uh, bidders to...
You just got that, broke down each one of these bids, wasn't it?
It's, it's got it in these bids.
We can, we can start there. If you can't find nothing we like, we can always rebid it out.
Well, why can't we start like you were talking about, Mr. Brown, with, like Madison County, get Terrell to contact them, find out who they're working with?
All right. Well, Madison County is fine, and he's absolutely correct. They pay an engineer to come in once a year, but they also have a public works director that handles all the other stuff.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's why I said we wouldn't have to pay.
You're not saying the salary that's paying the public works director. You just send that twenty grand they're paying as consultant to come in and do this.
That's why, if you heard me correctly, I said we wouldn't have to pay that twenty-five to thirty grand a year, because we're looking to get a public works director.
Correct. Correct. And again, we...
But I was telling you with Madison County, they paid eighty-five thousand, and they got a full comprehensive study done. Then they pay this guy to come in, and he runs the show.
Usually, your public works record don't have the computer stuff to do the, the mapping. That's very, it was, I'm not sure, I've never seen that put together with one individual. Uh, but us with public works directors, not a new thing. We've had five over the years. So, so again, I'm all for getting, you may want to get that independent study done. But whatever you get done, whether it's a public works director or worse, an independent study, all it is is advisement to y'all. It's not an absolute. It's, it's advisement, giving y'all data. That's all it is.
That's all we're asking.
The final decision is always at this board.
Yeah, that's right. We're just looking for the assessment more or less.
Yeah. So I'll do whichever one you want me to. I'll call them in, uh, each one of them. Uh, I think the kicking wood, if I remember, was kind of outrageous.
I'm good with either putting out a whole new bid or going in with what we got and reassessing. My, my problem is with...
If you get it broken down like I think they do, the road assessment should be split out separately in all.
It was.
And we look at that.
My problem is, we've been kicking this can down the road for several years now.
Well, from saying, you may be...
This motion that was put in place in the spring, we're just now getting bids open, and now we're talking about pivoting and going a different route. I mean, the taxpayers, folks, I mean, and you guys may not be getting the same feedback that I am, but it's been very evident to me that they are tired of not knowing what we're, what the plan is, you know, how we're basing that plan, uh, where are their dollars going to, I mean, where are we going to find the money to even catch up, because we're so far behind? What's the future outlook? And then you go and tell them, hey, by the way, we don't have a spot six dollars allocated to roads. Then that's a whole new can. So we need to, we're, we're beyond the point of getting on the horse here. We're already behind the eight ball, and we keep kicking this can down the road. I'm in no favor of going with these four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar bids for this full scope of work, but we can get what we need done at a reasonable ma, uh, reasonable rate to then turn around and give answers to our taxpayers to, hey, this is what we got. These are how our roads are graded. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I lived here in two thousand fourteen. Things have changed just a little bit since two thousand fourteen. And, and we talk about data. Right now, this, this Board of Commissioners goes off a two thousand fourteen road study. We have nothing up to date past that point.
What we're getting to, we may be quicker to go through these and break it down than we order to fix another bid package, send it out, wait eight, ten weeks, come back and, and, and go through the same thing.
Look at them, look at them, break them down. Just look at them, break it down, and see where you're at with that and bring it back next week.
I want to tell you something. I, I don't know when we'll get around to doing it, but we all get calls about some of these gravel roads and stuff like that. And a lot of people that live on them would like to see some of them paved for the first time. And I know we've been kicking that down the road for a while, too, but to me, that's something we'll be thinking about, too.
The problem with paving a lot of these dirt roads is you don't have right of way. That's the bottom line. That's, that's the issue.
Well, we can start on the ones that we do.
But you got one person that stops it for everybody, and that's been a problem on a lot of these roads.
Well, I asked the commissioners, I mean, at the current rate, at the current way of business, how we've been operating, do you guys honestly feel that we'll all of a sudden be able to pave some of these dirt roads?
Not the way we operate.
The problem is, well, where are you going to get right of way?
We're not even sealing nothing.
You need to get them wide enough so they meet DOT standards, so that that's where you can go with LMIG money in the future to do the resurface.
Well, maybe we could change some of these right of ways. Instead of having sixty-foot right of ways, cut them back some for some of these big paths that these people live on. I don't think they'll ever need a sixty-foot right of way.
You don't have to have at least forty to do a pave.
I agree with forty. I'll go along with your forty now.
But there's a lot of these roads you have prescriptive right of way. You don't have any deed of right of way on a lot of these dirt roads. Am I not right, Terrell?
I know that. Well, let's...
And if one person doesn't want to give it, it stops it for everybody.
Well, like Commissioner Teasley said, let's look into it and do the ones we can.
I don't have a problem with it. But I must tell you, that's the hurdle you're going to have.
All right. So everybody in agreement with, uh...
Looking through the package.
County administrator, uh, calling?
I'll, I'll go through them and break them down and, and break out what each one of them are for the road study and email it to you, and y'all can take a look at them while I'm looking.
I'd say we go ahead and give you a firm definition of what exactly to go with, so there's no gray area. Um, because essentially, what we're looking is, taking from the data that's already in place, we already have the road miles, we have, um, obviously outdated historical data there, but they can take it and then give us an updated, um, roads, um, what's the, the, because you need to give it to them, correct verbiage. Um, because it's not a, they don't even need to give us a, like, a plan per se to put in place. They need to give us a map that has a updated grade, a road graded, um, uh, itemized, line by line, each, each road. And, um, I think the one that referred to another county had is it actually had a map, a deliverable map, that had each road in color-coded, like, easily accessible from our taxpayers. They could get on our website, they could pull up that map and say, here, that's where my road stands. That's, that, that answers their question right there. It puts their, um, uh, you know, their, their worries at ease of where they stand as far as their road comparing, comparison to others. So that's, that's what I think we need to go back with them. It's, that's that top line on most of those bid packets. That's what we're looking for, and that's the deliverable.
And that's, that's the discussion. They all, I'm not sure about kicking wood, but they all use the same mapping software that we use. Um, we verify that. They all can, our stuff, there is Excel, they can all import it and sell, they, Excel data into their systems. So what we've got, they can import. Uh, all right. I think I talked to all of them, but, uh, already.
The problem with putting a list out, that list is current today. If it's not maintained, like a current one, yes, I agree, it's not, hasn't been. Uh, we have an event like you had the bridge on Twenty-Nine South, put all that truck traffic and all those secondary roads. Those roads, some of them were in really good shape. They were, some of them were literally destroyed within eight months. And you go and you tell people, hey, your road's number two on the list. And then the next year, you go out, it drops down to ten. People are going to be upset.
How is that relevant to this?
You was talking about ranking roads so people could see where their road ranked.
I don't understand how an event...
That's exactly what you said. So it changes every year, Jeff.
Commissioner, we have nothing to go off of right now at this point.
I get out, right. I know my roads are bad in my district.
Well, then let's just hire, y'all want to hire Commissioner Dorsey as our road czar?
I'll do it.
He can grade them for us?
You want to be a smarty, I mean, that's fine.
I mean, I didn't know that you knew so much.
I'm just sitting and saying, Jeff, apparently you, you think you know a lot more, too. But the whole point is...
No, actually, that's the whole point here is we don't...
You made a point that it may be at the top of the list, people could see. It changes every year. That's the point you're not getting. If you update this, the condition of the pavement will change every year. What's number two this year, maybe eight, it may be one next year. I don't know. It's going to change. That's the whole point I'm trying to make.
Would that not come in with the public works director to be able to...
You don't want a public works director. You said, well, no, you didn't. You'd save the money. That's what you said.
No, no, I reference back, since two thousand sixteen, we have not had one.
I'm just saying, we all talked about, we need a public works director.
If you look at the road study that John Kami put out, he, he specifically says, every five years at most, this Board of Commissioners is supposed to update this road study. Since two thousand fourteen, they have not.
All right. Let's get on to new business.
Let's hire a public works director and be straight with it.
That's what needs to happen.
That's what we made today. We've been talking about it. We need to do it. Need to put out the criteria for public works directors.
Already updated, working on the job description now.
That's what we need to do.
Well, I agree. We need a public's work director, but we need to get on with this at the same time.
Well, you could, you could do, you could do the road study and have whoever the person is have in a place to start to keep it up.
You can hand that over, and that'd be very helpful to him. He'll lead that, actually.
Let's go on to thirteen A. Uh, upgrade scales at transfer station, Terrell.
Basically, the scale that's there was there when the, the facility was built, back in the eighties. Uh, but outdated, uh, we can't get parts for them anymore. Uh, and they went out several times in the last couple of weeks, and we'd have to shut the place down for an hour or two to try to get them back up. Uh, the computer system is a DOS system. I don't know most of y'all.
There's a what, Terrell?
It's, it's, the system's older than most of the people in this room. Uh, but the only way we can fix it is to change out the electronics, to change out the sensors and all that, versus having to change the whole concrete, steel, everything else. And, uh, that quote I got from the company that makes the scale is, uh, for everything is thirty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And, and I highly suggest we, we get it done and be done with it.
Well, I was out there when it broke down this last time. It was very frustrating. I, I stayed out there a while.
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we go forward with this company and let them go ahead and upgrade all this stuff. Uh, I don't know. I spent a lot of time out there. I go out there a lot, dump a lot of debris. And it's, uh, it's very frustrating. And this thing's, as he says, DOS. The DOS system has been gone for a long time.
When y'all ask, when y'all ask me to get a report from out there, it's a lot of fun.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go forward with this, Terrell.
I got a question. So in the, in the proposal, there was one to do it Saturday afternoon on a Saturday.
Uh, when I call him and let him know, I'll tell him that's our request to try to do it.
That way it doesn't interrupt or disrupt anything. The sooner we can get it done, the better, because that thing, that place is booming, there's a lot of trash going through there, and we don't need to interrupt that stuff.
It was a mess out there. We was estimating track, turning away the big trucks.
I'll give you a second. Any other discussion?
To, to me, it seems like on the scales, about, there would be two sets of scales.
One in, one out.
One in and one out, because people are waiting, trying to get in and out. To me, it ought to be two sets of scales.
When you get the second, when you get the second shed, if you could do that.
Yeah. A lot of big places do that.
And the cost on that second scale is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, we, we'd end up moving the scales, one of the new, just keep them same place. Because I know that's where some of the feedback is, the bottlenecking. So I didn't know if it needed to be moved.
If you add another scale, it'd be on the other side coming back out.
Yeah, the building would be between the scales.
Keep the residential stuff separate from the commercial stuff.
All right.
We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
We're going to put in a motion Saturday.
Yeah. I got, I may amount to have...
Request for Saturday.
Request, request, request that the...
What's in the proposal?
Yeah. Request that it be, uh, done on Saturday.
Yes.
Okay. We can accept the proposal. All right. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five of it. All right, we'll move on to the tattoo body piercing ordinance and Ms. Kim, you want to...
A few weeks ago, Terrell had sent you out all the new, uh, the new legislation, the new, uh, statute on the health department. And so their job in this now is just to issue permits. And so we started with the heaviest hand. This particular ordinance that's drafted before you is going to require a licensed practical nurse, registered nurse, physician's assistant physician, or doctor of osteopathy.
Did you put the part in there, or is it already there, about having it been, uh, in business in the state of Georgia?
There's one that says if it's been in business in the county for one year immediately prior to the effective date, not the whole state.
Well, we don't have anybody that's doing that now.
Not that I know of, but we don't have business licenses either.
That's true.
And the other thing, I read through the whole thing, but back here on section forty-two five six, actually, the last paragraph, where you put, um, persons violating any provision of this article should be guilty of misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof, shall be punished by provided by section one dash thirteen. What is section one dash thirteen?
Thirty days in jail, thousand dollar fine.
That's the misdemeanor provision in our ordinance. So section one dash thirteen covers every ordinance violation in our whole code of ordinancees.
But does that limit that charge to whatever happens here? That's my question. It's...
It'll be up to a judge if...
Like, it turned into a felony is what I'm getting at.
This is just an ordinance violation.
It'd be a misdemeanor here.
Okay. I sort of, I just want to clear that up, get clear on it. That's all. Outside of rest area, I read, I, it's pretty, I don't think nobody's coming here.
All right. Gentlemen, we have this before us. Take this first reading. Can I get a motion, take a first reading?
Suck it.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Mr. Dorsey made the motion. Suck it. Back to Mr. Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five of it. All right, now we'll move on to, uh... Alright, now we'll move on to FB Land Holdings LLC, level three, Hartwell Acres subdivision. You got three ten acre lots and three six acre.
Let me explain my thinking on this. We have three ten acre or more tracks under. Fourteen, four point two, ten acres is exempt. Ten acres or more are exempt from the other requirements. So that's where what I, in my view, what we're looking at is the three six acre lots, six acre plus lots. Which would qualify under my interpretation to level three.
Well, there's no dimensions on this drawing out.
There's not, and let me explain that. Before they went to pay for the survey in this thing, I got the surveyor to sketch it out like this. Where if y'all give it a preliminary approval, then there'll be the extra survey.
Oh, okay.
Then that survey will come back before this board with all the required covenants and all that, all that on. But the surveying cost, I didn't want to pay for the survey and it got, I get past this board for that.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at just what you got there, you know, the flag lots you got, you know, you gotta, you gotta have.
Ten acres though.
Yeah, but you still gotta have a road front.
You do. You got sixty foot of road front.
Don't, don't rule a car a hundred?
I personally think this is a level one subdivision and I'll tell you why.
And then their mailbox is gonna be three hundred feet apart when you get them flag lots. That's the other question.
Part of the level one. So if you look at level one, the minimum acreage or lot size is three acres. There's not a cap on it. And you can have three to six lots. So if you'll keep going, there you go. Each parcel after subdivision shall abut an existing county road or highway. It does that. Check that box. B, each such lot or parcel after division shall have a minimum of three acres per parcel. Check that box. C, any driveway of each such divided parcel shall be a minimum of three hundred feet from any other driveway. Or the driveway rather, from the other driveway, on the same side of the roadway as measured from the center of each driveway.
I said no dimensions here. Can't check that.
That the way that's currently laid out. But the purpose of that was to keep having these driveways right up next to each other. That's why we put that in there. So if you take this as a level one, you could do a shared driveway and you could meet that requirement.
How you gonna share them two parcels, there's ten acres in between?
It's also, you can share the driveway on the edges of one of them and you meet that. So go on up, scroll down. Then all the driveways must meet the minimum sight distance requirements. That is a problem. With that curve and the speed limit, I think is fifty miles an hour. There's no way it's gonna meet that sight distance. That's the only problem with this whole thing. All divided parcels must provide for and grant driveway of thirty feet. That's not an issue there, because we already got. I think it's sixty foot on that road. All divided lots shall have a minimum width of a hundred and fifty feet of road front and just serviced by an individual well or a hundred feet. And width on a public water system. So that's checked out when we're good there. Health department regulations, I don't, they haven't done the permitting, I mean, the soil per test, so we don't know, that I know of, it's not recorded. And all the plaits must be stamped here. The issue I see is all these lots are not ten acres, so it doesn't meet the level where it's exempt. I mean, it does kind of fall in a hybrid of a level one and a level three. But if you go back and look at the level three requirements, it says that the level one and level two that don't conflict still apply. And because you don't have ten acres or more, I think it's gotta comply with the level one. I think that's the cleanest one that it lines up with and it doesn't cause us to have to give a variance or anything else.
They gonna have to get something here to just, some kind of scripture in these road fronts though and all that, because we're not, we're not seeing that.
But if you, I think what Terrell's looking for from us is.
I know, he's looking for consistency to break, go do it and come back.
And I think if we go with a level one, we're protected.
Well, he's gotta have a hundred on the flag.
You'd only have to have a hundred if a level one for this county water on that road.
I don't think it's sufficient. Water. It's not going on all your thing.
It's not a requirement, it's not a requirement as a level one subdivision.
No water, not on a level one, it's on a level three.
Level two.
That's why I think level one is, is the cleanest way to go. And it meets all the requirements. The only question will be the, the driveways and sight distance and that curve. And if that's, those lots down there are big enough, then it shouldn't be a problem. Cause that is a pretty sharp curve. That doesn't look, it's, it's a lot sharper than what it looks like.
It is. I love that word, sir.
But I, we may have performed a miracle here, because in my eyes, this may fit two levels that we've made an ordinance for. Because I don't see really why it don't.
Kim, what's your thoughts?
For a level, I don't see why it don't fit level three.
Well, even if it does fit level, because even if it does fit level three, the level one stuff that doesn't conflict still applies, level one and level two.
Well, the application was made under level three.
But the ordinance does. Read, read the ordinance. Go back.
Would the six acre lots be the only ones that's complying, because the ten acres are exempt, right?
That's the way I read it.
What you'd be talking about is the six acre.
You can't, it's all one parcel. And if it's split up ten acres, all the ten acres are done at one time, then it's exempt. But when you're doing the six acres with the ten acres, that's where it becomes an issue. You agree, Kim?
I don't see that.
I was about to say something along those lines. Under our definitions, we're talking about one parcel being divided. So once it's not divided into ten total acres, my interpretation was. That just because you've got one ten acre tract and a subdivision doesn't make subdivision exempt and doesn't make that ten acre tract exempt. That was just my take on it. A couple of other things that I wanted to point out for you guys, and of course, you know, you would have to get a plat. I guess we're waiting to get to that stage. You've got a forty-six dash one one two, a hundred and twelve access. What did you all mean there when you said access to every subdivision of this does qualify as subdivision? Over a public street or county road shall be limited to two curb cuts.
That would be on a level two subdivision, where you'd have to put the road in.
Yeah, that's.
Then we need to make that, well, this is, no, this is saying access to any subdivision by public street or county road.
But a level one takes that out of play, because it abuts a county road or highway.
And level three does, because you're not adding any roads.
He's gonna have to go back to a level one.
I agree.
He's about it, because I mean, he's got.
It's clear, it's the cleanest one.
It's gonna be the cleanest, but he gonna have to make him, he's gonna have to get his hundred feet on his road fronts down there.
I don't understand why does it not fit level three?
Well, he got six lots there, which he can do all on the road front.
It says division land greater than five acres up to nine point nine nine acres.
It doesn't check all the boxes, though.
Well, this is the same box. A survey of such division must need to meet approval of the health department stamped by the county. That's in both of them.
But come on down and read that about level two, level one.
All of rules of level one and level two subdivisions not in conflict herewith shall remain applicable to level three land divisions. Except that posting and advertising are not required.
Well, like I said, the level one's the cleanest, if they could just clean up, draw the lines on those flag lots here.
What do you mean it's the cleanest though?
So you got, you got six, you got six cuts, you got six road cuts there and the way you can cut it is.
You don't have to have six road.
Six lots that front on an existing county road.
You can do the six lots in your level one.
There's not but three.
There's six.
There's six. You got one, two, three, four, five, six.
No, there's only three.
You're taking a master parcel and you're splitting it into six lots. One already exists, because there's a home on it, but there's five new lots.
There are three six acre lots.
Marshall, you missed the point. There's six lots total. And you just heard what Kim said, she.
You gotta group them into one.
Yeah.
You can't, so that's, that's what you're saying. You can't separate the ten acres out.
Separate it out unless we.
Is the middle one even a part of this, because this already been split out, right?
No, that's, that's, all this is one parcel.
It's one parcel.
But I, I thought that the middle one was already split out on another split.
It's just the house in the middle of fifty-six acres.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I thought that that was purchased and it's already been purchased by another individual.
It's not what I understood.
There's someone living there.
Tax assistors website today, so maybe they did it this year. Okay, because it's still being taxed as fifty-six acres.
So how did they subdivide?
Cause it should just be five, it should, it's just one cut.
But it's two cuts. I didn't know that. But I still think it's.
Just a couple of things I wanted to point out to y'all that just kind of conflicted with what we were doing and. Y'all can do whatever you wanna do. The other thing was the residential lots had to have a width of a hundred feet. And, and I think that we were generally talking about at a septic site. But these are clearly not gonna be a hundred feet wide and the flag portion's right. And then we have a prohibition against flag lots.
That's what I said there, he's gonna have to widen lots on them for a place.
Well, there's definitely.
It's in there.
Somebody had reasons why. They split it that way for a reason.
It's under forty-six dash four.
The flag lot means a lot which is connected by a private drive to a public county or private road. Typically situated behind another lot that abuts the same public county or private road and has less than one hundred feet of road front. We hitting one hundred feet twice in here, once on the width of the lot and once on.
We just proved one down on twenty-nine about three months ago and we said it had to have a hundred figure road front and it did.
That's why I'm, I'm only pointing these things out so y'all can be consistent.
But ten acres does not make it exempt.
If it was all ten acres, it would be. If it was all.
I'm talking about the flag lot. It's ten acres, over ten acres. And then it says in our ordinance that it's, if it's over ten acres, then it's exempt from our ordinance.
But, but we have residential lots, level one and level three, all lots shall have a minimum width of one hundred feet. So you're saying it's not even a level three, it's exempt altogether?
Yeah. I disagree.
I mean, that's the way I would look at it. I mean, it's, we say in our ordinance that if it's ten acres, then it's exempt.
From the levels, but does it exempt the road front?
I mean, if we keep it a level one, it's clear, it's clean and it takes care of itself.
So our exemption says.
Well, you still got a flag lot.
The division of length and the parcels of ten acres or more.
You have to comply to a hundred feet. That's in a level one.
Our, our exemption says the division of land and the parcels of ten acres or more. So this is a division where some parcels are ten acres or more.
Not all.
Not all of them. So we didn't leave an exemption in there where some parcels could be ten acres and some not connected. That was just the way that I read that.
But it's still clear the way it reads.
It was clear to me until I got here tonight, so.
Well, yeah.
I'm gonna go with what Kim can defend.
I'm gonna make a motion, we take this as a level one subdivision.
I'll give, I'll give you a second. That's the cleanest way I see it. But they'll take the flag lots and make them a hundred.
Yeah, they'll have to comply to level one.
If we tell them, if we go back, if I get them to go back and say they need to pull them openings.
To a hundred feet.
Hundred feet. They sixty now.
They ain't paid for the survey yet, no way you said, so they can move the lines in.
That's why I said, level one makes it so much cleaner.
That's exactly why I didn't tell them, go ahead and give me the survey, this right here. But alright, so we wanted a hundred foot wide, we're sixty foot wide now on the ten acre, eleven acre lots. They'll still cut that, they'll still be over six acres.
Oh, yeah. They ain't gonna take that much.
And so are we still good with the flag lot?
No, you gotta make it a hundred feet. That's what we want.
It's still a flag lot.
Yeah, it's still a flag lot.
It meets the requirements. It does, if it's over a hundred feet, it doesn't meet the definition of a flag lot.
If we do it at a level one, they'll have to follow that hundred foot rule.
If anything less than.
We're going back now to get out the definition of a flag lot.
Right, and anything less than a hundred feet is a flag lot. Anything a hundred feet or greater is not, according to the definition. We changed this. It used to be sixty. It wasn't the last change.
Question, just to make things more complicated, let's say that. It wouldn't, it wouldn't complicate none. Let's just say that he wanted to section off the three frontage lots. And didn't want any frontage, road frontage on those two back larger parcels, that he says he's gonna keep it himself. And he just wanted to section off three of those lots up front. Could he even do that?
Not doing it the way it is now.
Do one else? But he couldn't split the three up front all on Bethany Bow.
Yes, he could. It was a level one. But he couldn't do it the way it is now. He'd have to take that as a block.
I was gonna say, you got two of your real fuck. I was just thinking that, you know, hypothetical, if he wanted to do just them three, take these out of it. Yeah, them six acre lots he got, he could split them, but after two years, as long as he keeps that three hundred foot road front out there though.
You got a motion, second, us. If everybody's good.
I still got questions.
We got goodness.
Jeff opened that book again. We just closed it. Sorry.
No, that's alright. But I, I would like to make a request when they're looking at this. To make a plat or whatever, to put the driveways along the side of the other driveways going to the back part.
We can draw that. The driveways have to be three hundred feet apart.
We can draw that driveway, but that don't mean that's where it's gonna be.
I, I'm asking, that would cut down on cuts. On the road.
In, in, in the real world, you put your driveway where you built your house at.
Well, I mean, he's got a mighty long driveway though.
He may have put the house where he put the driveway.
Yeah.
The house is already there.
He may have to put the mailbox where the postman's is. Alright, we got a motion to classify this as a level one, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five of it. Alright, now we'll move on to public comment. Anyone here for public comment?
Yes, sir.
If you would, come and state your name, address and.
Patrick O'Hara, forty Bailey Place. I like my road. Good to be with you gentlemen tonight. There were two things I wanted to talk about. My wife and I are running O'Hara's Nursery at one ten Bailey Place. It's a new farm here in the county. This spring, we had some discussion with Marshall Turpin and. Terrell, about some temporary agricultural signage that we had put out. They were letting me know it wasn't permitted, needed to be out of the right of way. We, we took the signs back. We didn't put them back out. But I've gone around the county a little bit and it seems as though there are signs that are not out of the right of way. Some are permanent or other businesses, obviously all the churches, which I fully support. And I'm just wondering if this body could perhaps adopt something to allow for some temporary agricultural signage along the way. All we had was something that had an arrow and it said O'Hara's Nursery. There were three of them. We are open in the spring for about twelve weeks. We're open in the fall for about six weeks. Put it out, you know, some kind of safe distance for line of sight, things like that. It's about the size of a political sign. See if maybe something like that could be formally adopted at some point, not only for myself, but for, you know, any, anybody in the farming business here in the county. I know there's a harvest your own blueberry guy, but that was request number one.
Well, I only answer that, if you put those signs on the right of way, the bush hog gonna get them.
So. Well, that's, that's actually, I, I look at it this way. I try to be far enough back for the bush hog and if the bush hog gets it, that's on me. If it damages the bush hog, I understand that. I can't do it, so we gotta stay out of the way of the bush hog.
The only thing I feel like is if we were to make some kind of ordinance or whatever we say to put some signs on the right of way. Then everybody gonna jump on that bandwagon and everybody ain't gonna hold them back like you are. They gonna. and everybody ain't gonna hold them back like you are. They gonna throw them right up their own side highway.
Well, again, I'm only asking for farms.
I, I understand where you're, oh, yes. I'm just giving you the reasons why I'm, I wouldn't do mine.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just kind of delineating a couple of things that might assuage your concerns.
Okay.
Temporary, you know, so part of the concern was when I talked to Marshall Turpin, it was 10 feet. Terrell said you gotta be out of the right of way. So the right of way, we were on Rock Spring, the right of way is 80. It was, it was, it was, it was 80. So 40, 40 feet had me in Dave King's first row of corn.
I think it's 60 and 80 up there. There's a couple of changes.
So I mean, even if you said, hey, it's gotta be 20 feet off the road, I think that's safe from the bush hogs.
Some places, yeah. Some of them not.
But I mean, it's the sort of thing where maybe, maybe dig into it and see if it's 20 or 30. But 40 was Dave King's first row of corn.
So the problem comes into play. There's multiple problems that come in with this. And the county does have a sign ordinance. It's in section 70. It talks about this stuff, about not being in the right of way and this, that and the other. The problem is, not saying you do it, but somebody would go put a sign in there. There's still signs from Lake Hartwell Music Festival out and about in the right of way. I'm just using it as an example. There's political signs that don't get picked up for whatever reason. And then the bush hog guys have to work around this stuff. It's better to put these things on private property. In that way, you don't have to worry about it. I know that may not be what, what you could do, but we do get complaints about signs. People go and put signs up that block visibility. And, you know, if we get complaints or we find out about it, we, we do reach out to tell them. I, I always call them first and ask them to move it. They move it, then I'm like, be excited. But that's, we need to look at chapter 70 and see what else in there because I'm not familiar with it. I'm looking at it now.
And, and I did look at chapter 70. One of the conundrums actually was at the beginning of chapter 70.
85.
It states that everything in this section applies to signs that are either abutting or visible from the interstate.
Yeah.
And then nobody did a second article kind of thing. So.
Then it comes on down.
Look, at the end of the day, I'm just throwing this out to you gentlemen to possibly consider something. Not for today. I don't necessarily need to put a sign out tomorrow. I'll live with it. One of the reasons I moved to Hart County is we used to live in Connecticut. There used to be a lot of farms in Connecticut. They're gone. I support farming. I am a small farm. I am not a, you know, 1,200 acres of row crop. I'm something a little different. But I support farming and I support all the things that come from it. And I know that farming's changing. And I think you're gonna see in the future some, for some younger people to get involved in farming, they're gonna need, you know, things like putting up a vegetable garden, maybe as part of their parents' operation and, and doing something. So again, it's just throwing it to you to, to look at. Maybe you do something, maybe you don't. The second thing I wanted to do is simply introduce myself. Apparently, there's been some concern between some assessor issues and, and some other questions. So I wanted to say hello, introduce, introduce myself. My wife and I, like I said, we were farmers in Connecticut for 30 years. We started O'Hara's Nursery this year as spring number two. We are a grower retailer, which is kind of different from, I think, what people are used to. We sell what we grow. We grow what we sell. We have one greenhouse. This is our semi-retired business. We are open seasonal, seasonally. And I wanted to put a face to a name for you gentlemen. Invite you to stop by and see what we do at any time. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to walk you through it. Like I said, I'm, I'm a supporter of farming. So I'd like.
Bailey Circle.
What's that?
Bailey Circle.
We're on Bailey Place.
Bailey Place.
It actually used to be Lila Belle Bailey Parker's House is where we are. And then we were lucky enough to have Travis, her son, sell us his seven acres, which apparently I'm told it's, there's a barn there. I was told it's the county's first two-story brewer barn, which is still standing, although nobody could see it for about 40 years. And we're just working at growing annuals, perennials, things, that sort of thing. So like I said, just wanted to say hello and introduce myself.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you.
You thought it was a ticket for a fee.
Yeah. Free flowers.
Hi, Jen Wagner, 173 Moats Road.
173?
173 Moats Road.
Moats, okay.
I also have two parts. First part is I've been talking with Mr. Owens about possibly holding an event at the field in front of the ball field with my nonprofit. We'd like to hold an event where we have some vendors and provide some free and paid vaccinations for pets to the community. I know that he's been very helpful, but I understand that I needed to kick it up to y'all because no one has ever rented that area before. It's just the open field next to the parking lot is what we would like to use, either through a paid rental or just y'all allowing us to use it to serve the community. I don't know what I need to formally request that, but I wanted to bring it up. Part two is I wanted to inquire about the progress of the contract that the county is negotiating with NAGAS and see where we stand with that. Because I know that that has been a little bit of a contention. I know there have been some issues that we have had with NAGAS. I know they've got a new director and that's a positive thing. But I'm not quite sure where we stand. And just as a citizen that's involved in animal health welfare, it's a concern to me as to whether we're gonna progress with that, what the standards are gonna be, or whether we're still looking at possibly bringing that in-house.
What the contract, contract with what again? I'm sorry.
With NAGAS, Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter.
So we, we had a contract that was presented to us at the last meeting. It was the last meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And we basically have said that before, we're gonna commit Hart County to that funding formula. The other funding partners are gonna have to agree to. And then we also talked about the possibility of appointing board members to the board that would oversee that. And I don't, we're still trying to get the nuts and bolts and the legalities of where all this is at right now.
Okay. How can the public keep up with that?
That's something that's gonna involve multiple government jurisdictions. And we voted to do that here publicly at, I think it was the last meeting, wasn't it?
I think it was.
And we haven't heard anything back. So that's where it was sent back to. Terrell did have a meeting with some folks.
No, no, no. That's, that's not the question. I know we're still taking animals up there.
It's like point 14 or point 15.
But to answer your question, it's just sitting idling right now, so.
Well, it's not necessarily sitting idling. I mean, it's, it's moving, but it's.
Sure. Sure, sure. Are they required to accept animals brought to them by Hart County Animal Control or by Hartwell Animal Control, or can they turn them away for space reasons?
They're supposed to accept them.
Okay. That's what I thought.
I think the only way they can turn one down is if it's sick, right?
That's one of the things that needs to be worked out in the contract.
Or rabid, rabbit or something. They can turn it out as a disease.
We've had issues before.
Under what, what circumstances are those? Okay, well, yeah, okay. That, that makes sense under a court case or something like that. Okay. All right.
You're still looking for the parking lot, right?
Your first question.
Yes.
That would need to go through the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay.
That's who would make that recommendation to us and let them run the recreation stuff.
Okay, then I need to get back to Mr. Owens and set something up on that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? And just clarify something. That comment that was made last, or is that what you want to do? Clarify something that was made last meeting?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, put through on, on retreat area. Frankie's got you. There was a couple of mistakes on my part after addressing the issue. But Frankie came to me the very next day and handed me a letter. And it was to do with one or two errors on my part, which really didn't change the issue of, the main issue of it was at a certain age being exempt from jury duty. That was the main issue. Commented last time. And what he brought in letter form says that he and a board or a group, something, are responsible for the rulings of who gets selected jury. But in that letter, it indicates that particular thing rather than him. They begin over again with the listings. So if I'm applied last month and there's jury service now, they bothered me. And I come and say, hey, I got an exemption form in. It means the next time if there's any grand jury going, that board or entity associated with Frankie just goes down the list again. And it's a new selection, so I can still be hit with a letter.
I think, didn't you fill out an exemption form, another one, an additional form?
I have one on file right now, to my knowledge, yeah.
Right, that's, I understand.
Two times at least, if not a third. And the point being, if I don't get the letter in my possession, even though I've signed on, because there's a new grand jury going, he and that associated board doesn't go through to see who's been exempted. So I get a letter and if I didn't answer it, like I said, truss me along with the cops. I think we ought to do something to address an idea that if you have an exemption, that it should be on file. I indicated last time, that's a big question mark with my aversion to or acceptance of artificial intelligence.
Well, that's the one thing I wanted.
Associated thing, right there.
One thing that I wanted, I think, was a lot of confusion about. And the clerk of court, you know, they do not use AI as far as jury selection. They do not use AI as far as, you know, judges or lawyers or nothing of that sort is used in the court systems here in Hart County. I'd say the whole state of Georgia. I, I mean, AI is, is not allowed in a justice system at this point. So just for the clarification of the confusion of AI selecting jury, that does not happen.
Right.
Okay.
But the exemption paper signing in a file drawer seems not to mean anything by the letter that he brought to me. Each time there's a grand jury going.
How long a, a period of time was this?
That I don't know.
Well, the way I understand it, there's a, ever so many years you have to reapply for an exemption.
Well, reasonable might be seven years or something like that.
Yeah.
But to get nailed three times in less than four or five years.
Well, I, I don't know what the time span is, but it does recycle. But I think Mr. Drake could probably answer all of your questions about all of this. I mean, we're, we're board commissioners and, you know, that's out of our.
Not saying you gotta create a law or any such thing.
Yeah.
But just be aware, when you turn and bathe yourself, you'll be subjected to the same stuff. And if it's not clarified or something, then you get a letter, don't appear. They're looking after you.
Okay. I don't think everybody, anybody, I don't think anybody ever been arrested in Hart County for not showing up for jury.
I don't wanna be the first. I'll put it that way. I am in the 76 brackets and.
Well, you don't have to have a colonoscopy anymore. 75, they've limited on that. Be thankful for that.
All right.
Something the government wanted to be out there.
One good part, but.
All right, anybody else? Anybody else's public comment? All right, if not, can we get a motion to go into executive session litigation personnel of real estate?
So be it.
Just real estate, right?
Yeah.
Well, I always say all of them.
They all under it.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah.
Oh, did you?
I said.
No, I just, I thought it was just real estate only. Is it other stuff?
That's all I've got.
Okay. So it just needs to be real estate because you're not gonna discuss other stuff.
Well, I made a motion, I think, Commissioner Brown, probably. Same time. Anyway, I'll give you a second.
All right. All in favor? That's five votes. All right. Thank you all for being here.